All right. Good afternoon. I'd like to welcome everyone to the Atchison County Commission meeting for February twentieth, twenty twenty four. Like to call the meeting to order. If you please stand, I will read the prayer for elected leadership for invocation this afternoon. Oh, God, give us strong, wise, compassionate leaders. Send us leaders with truthful hearts and impassioned spirits. Who will stand for justice and freedom for all. Give us leaders who will unite with other leaders to bring about a kinder, more peaceful world. Leaders who will support their coworkers during times of challenge and change. Give us leaders who are servants of the people. Listening, encouraging, caring for all races, creeds, and cultures, welcoming those who seeking asylum, providing a safe place for all to thrive. Amen. Please join in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, public comments. Seeing none. Um, approval of the minutes. Did you guys have a chance to review the minutes um from February thirteenth?
Yes.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve?
So move.
Yeah, second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes three to zero. Commissioner comments. Commissioner Rivas?
Um, I would say nothing this time. It's a little clunky here being long distance, so uh but uh yeah, eager to hear from you guys.
Okay. Commissioner?
I don't have anything to do.
Um, the only thing I have is I attended my first uh safety committee meeting last week, so that was good learning experience and uh what's nice to be part of. Uh, new business. We have an executive session scheduled for twenty minutes, non-elected personnel with the commission, finance, and HR.
I'll move up the board of county commissioners to recess an executive session. At one oh three PM to discuss personal matters of non-elected personnel as allowed by KSA seventy five dash four three one nine B one. And the purpose of the closed session is to protect the privacy rights of the employee. And the board come out of executive session in twenty minutes in the commission room of the courthouse basement, and the present will be the three, two commissioners in person, one on via Zoom, finance director and HR.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes three to zero. Okay, we are back in open session and we have an executive session, attorney, client.
Oh, let's see. What is it?
I'm trying to recall.
I believe that one was mine that I wanted to discuss. Senior Village with. But it may not be within.
I'm sorry. Oh, you're fine. Well, and I know you've had sent us some email and some items that are. We were gonna discuss in the open session.
Okay, but yeah. It was for Senior Village. Um, it was in regards to. Yes, I think we we need to have it. I need to know how to move forward with. Something at Senior Village.
Okay.
How long?
Fifteen minutes. With half, well, clearly, since I guess it's gonna be a funny client, but.
Sorry.
It's been crazy.
So it's.
Oh, thanks.
Three commissioners. Uh, Pat, HR, and Finance, please. I'll move the board of county commissioners recessed executive session at one twenty six PM for consultation with an attorney for the public body, which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship is allowed by KSA seventy five dash four three one nine B two. And that the purpose of the closed session is to protect the confidentiality of the discussion. And that the board come out of the executive session in fifteen minutes in the commission room of the courthouse basement, and those present will be three commissioners, uh, county counselor, HR, and uh Finance.
Oh, second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes three to zero. Okay, we are back in open session. Mark Zeltner, Finance Director.
Hi.
Hi.
Um, so um I have purchase orders for the twenty twenty four county appropriations to each of the entities that um was for the twenty twenty four budget. Um, if it was a large amount, um somewhere north of fifty thousand, it was, um, we split it in half so that um, when first half taxes are paid, um, we don't like go in the, we don't over expend what we have brought in for taxes. So there should be some of those that are first half and then later on, as the second half of taxes are due, we'll pay the second half of appropriations.
Okay. All right, so I have a purchase order uh in the amount of twenty four thousand dollars to Achievement Services uh for the twenty twenty four county uh first half county appropriation. Do I have a motion to approve?
So move.
Say it.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes. Three to zero.
There's, there's quite a few of them. Well, I follow that.
Purchase order in the amount of five thousand dollars for the twenty twenty four county appropriations to the Amelia Earhart Festival. Do I have a motion to approve?
So move.
Say it.
It's moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes three to zero. I have purchase order in the amount of five thousand dollars to the Atchison Chamber of Commerce for the twenty twenty four county appropriations. I have a motion to approve.
So move.
Okay.
I've been seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Yeah.
Passes three to zero. Okay. That was for tourism. I have a purchase order in the amount of five thousand dollars for the Main Street program to Atchison Area Chamber of Commerce for the twenty twenty four county appropriations. Do I have a motion to approve?
So move.
We say it.
Seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Passes.
Eric, I'm gonna let you lead, plus there's just something you really don't wanna do.
Okay, I have a purchase order in the amount of fifteen thousand seven hundred and fifty nine dollars for the first half of twenty twenty four county appropriations to the Atchison County Conservation District. Do I have a motion to approve?
So move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes three to zero. Purchase order in the amount of eighty four thousand two hundred and sixty seven dollars for the first half of twenty twenty four county appropriations to the Atchison County Extension Office. Do I have a motion to approve?
So move.
Okay.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Passes three to zero. I have a purchase order in the amount of seventy five hundred dollars for the twenty twenty four county appropriations to the Atchison County Fair Association, and this one is for the the fair.
So move.
Okay.
Yep, say it.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes three to zero. Okay. The purchase order in the amount of seventy five hundred dollars for the twenty twenty four county appropriations for the Atchison County Fair Maintenance. Do I have a motion to approve?
So move.
Say it.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Passes three to zero. I have a purchase order in the amount of ten thousand dollars for the twenty twenty four county appropriations to the Atchison County Historical Society. Motion to approve.
So move. Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Passes. Three to zero. Purchase order in the amount of two thousand dollars for the twenty twenty four county appropriations for Atchison Juneteenth Committee. Do I have a motion to approve?
So move.
Say it.
It moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes three to zero. The purchase order in the amount of ten thousand dollars for the twenty twenty four county appropriations to Memorial Hall trustees. Do I have a motion to approve?
So move.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Passes three to zero. Purchase order in the amount of ten thousand dollars for the twenty twenty four county appropriations to Northeast Kansas Environmental Services. Do I have a motion to approve?
So move.
Say it.
It's moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Passes three to zero. Purchase order in the amount of forty thousand dollars for the first half of twenty twenty four county appropriations to Northeast Kansas Multi-County Health Department. Do I have a motion to approve?
So move.
Say it.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes three to zero. Purchase order in the amount of two thousand six hundred and thirty seven dollars for the twenty twenty four county appropriations to Northeast Kansas Area Agency on Aging. Do I have a motion to approve?
So move.
Say it.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes three to zero. Hey, I have a purchase order in the amount of sixty two thousand five hundred dollars for the first half of the twenty twenty four county appropriations to project concern. Do I have a motion to approve?
So move. Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes three to zero. I have a purchase order in the amount of twenty five thousand dollars for the first half twenty twenty four county appropriations to the Guidance Center. Do I have a motion to approve?
So move.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes three to zero. Okay, and I have a purchase order in the amount of five thousand dollars. This is the first half of the twenty twenty four county appropriation to the Guidance Center for the Regional Crisis Center. Do I have a motion to approve?
So move.
Okay.
Been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes three to the zero.
Thank you.
Yes.
Can you just put this in the move folder?
Sure.
Do you wanna talk to us about any of the other things you emailed us?
Yeah.
Tables in the commission room?
Um, yeah, so um as staff come to sit with you guys um each week, uh myself, I guess, kind of included, there's always stuff that we have and need a little area to to sit somewhere. Um, so I kind of sit over there to have table, but like Mister Snyder here, he has something and he may want a little table, so there's not a whole lot of room and distance here, but I kind of found some narrow, like um conference or training tables that maybe are six foot wide, five foot wide, but as they're, as they're narrower, they wouldn't take up as much space. And maybe if we had some just along the front row or one in the front, one in the back, um, I don't know what you guys think.
Uh, have you talked with uh maintenance?
No.
Because I think that before we enlarged the EOC out there, in a small conference room, they had a bunch of these type of desks, which I don't know what happened to them, but now they've got the large table, tables in there. So we may have some stuff on site, or he may have have something that's in the storage.
Okay.
That, I mean, they would look good and they would be about the right size if we wanted to put in there.
Okay.
But uh I'm I'm not against the other, but if we have something on hand, we might as see if that
Okay.
would work. Um I'm in, I'm in favor of getting something there, yes. I think we did have a table back there at one time, and I guess before we moved out to the EOC for a while and it never did get put back, because we had one sitting there under the clock that uh I know a couple people would utilize.
I will do that. And see what he has to say.
Okay.
Um, there was also something else that came up with um, one of the transitions from a prior employee's duty um that I've kind of taken over. And things not being handled appropriately with that account. Um, I talked to a different um outside source and indicated that it was um not good practice, what I found out, and it should be stopped immediately and a policy should be created. And I haven't um addressed it completely with HR about putting in a policy for it. Because I wanted to talk to you guys first, but um.
I think this topic is subject to executive session. Sorry for interrupting.
So I think it would be open session as long as we're not talking about specific employee. But the abuse of an Amazon account that the county holds. Um I guess Pat, those are county tax dollars and tax evasion. How does that qualify for executive session?
Well, I I think you'd have some discretion on how you wanted to handle it. If you're going to talk about employees, specific employees. Of course, that could be a personnel matter. Um, if you're just talking about what should your policy be, I agree that would not be the grounds for an executive session, but that should be in public. Um, so, but I think it, it depends on, you're gonna have to limit the discussion though. If uh you're going to have the full discussion in the public.
So I guess my question as a commissioner is like, how did we not have checks and balances in place for the county's Amazon account and to allow personal purchases that were sales tax exempt when that's sales tax evasion and I mean.
Well, I I don't know how the, I mean, Amazon accounts work. I don't have like Amazon, I have an Amazon account, but not, not associated with the county. Um, I don't know if we have one Amazon account or.
We do have just one county one. If if another employee has a county account, it's not set up.
You're not aware of it.
Set up that way, because there's a a business account on Amazon that allows for our tax um exempt certificate to be uploaded, and then Amazon goes through it and make sure they have all the proper paperwork for their end um on Kansas State retailer sales tax and all of that stuff. Um, so if another employee has it, they don't have the proper paperwork to be tax exempt. So this is the old, the sole one that we should be operating. Um, multiple departments can go in and order from this Amazon account. Um, they choose their billing or an invoice or where it's sent to, but um everybody else is business purchases.
So I guess just what the steps are. I mean, Kansas Department of Revenue has a link for practices like this where you can submit fraud and tax evasion, or I don't know what the steps are to understand how it happens and what checks and balances as the county. How, how this occurs.
Is, is that subject to the, for auditors to look at? And do they just not go there?
So, well, I don't think that auditors go into like your vendor accounts, like Quill or um NavRats or any other type of office supply vendor that we use. They just look at receipts to see it and like invoices that we approve and and if there's sales tax on those. Um, but when there's purchases happening on a personal level where an invoice is not turned in for county funds, there's, there's nothing for them to look at. So if they're not in the online account to see what y'all have been purchasing, they, they would know, I guess, rather.
So an employee could enter their own payment method that would be personal credit card or bank card.
Yeah. Which, and with a business account, we, that, those prices are already negotiated down a little bit. So with Amazon's business, you get a percentage off the top than like what a personal Amazon account would have um to help businesses out with inflation and stuff like that. Um.
Is there a way to do a double verification or something through the account to have to make sure that there's someone else can see it or verify the work?
Not, not that I can tell. Um and as far as that goes, that wouldn't be just limited to Amazon. That would be any, anything.
Yeah, I'd say that's, this is the first step. I'm just seeing, you know, it's like what we do here, we need to apply to other.
I suppose you could have, you know, we could create our own internal thing where if you wanna order something, you would need someone else to look it over, maybe. I don't know. I I don't wanna make anything worse on.
Like a clearinghouse to make sure that it's appropriate before it gets sent on to Billy.
Uh huh. I do, sorry.
No, you're fine.
Um, I, from the conversation that I had with another resource, um they said at that point, it would not be on the county's um responsibility or what I'm trying to say. It would be the individual that's doing the act that would be responsible for paying it back or getting in the trouble. It would be the county itself.
Well, I mean, there are terms of use for any online vendor that you use, and they're usually lengthy. I I haven't read Amazon's terms of terms of use. I'm gonna guess it's in, it's addressed in. So.
And as far as Amazon's terms of use, but if an employee was using the county's Amazon account to be tax exempt for purchases, there shortchanging Atchison County of that sales tax money.
True, yeah.
That's.
But I I don't think, I think what he's saying is that responsibility didn't fall on the county, but that would be on the individual who ordered it.
Right.
And it, yeah, and I guess it isn't just the Amazon. It would also be, I mean, it'd be NAPA, if somebody's going down using the county's account. I don't know if we get a little better price than the public, but.
I believe we do, yes.
Yeah, so you could have the same thing.
And if they pay their sales tax, was that okay?
Well.
Or, because we discussed this before.
But they can't.
Not with, no, no, they pay themselves.
Yeah, if it's okay with the vendor, it's okay with us, I, I think.
As long as they're paying their sales tax.
And they're not using, but in that case, they're really not using the county's account.
Right.
No.
So to Eric's point, is the auditor someone that can compile these numbers for us to know?
No, unless we give them access to the account. So it would only be the, anybody that had access or that the commission would want or trust to have access to it.
I I think with Amazon, you can go back through and even look at last year and look at the payment and sort of the payment method.
All the way back to twenty eleven, we can go.
It would take some time to do it, but I think staff, I think we can do it ourselves.
It definitely is gonna take time.
And then once we get the dollar figure, then look historically at what the tax rates were and then collect the tax that we miss out on or?
Well. I, I think that's probably beyond the scope of what the county can do. We, we are not an authorized collector of sales tax. I mean, make a report, I guess, so.
That's what I kind of read through the K D O R, is they are the ones that. But Alan, do you have any comments on this?
I think we need to definitely move forward with it. I think uh we probably do need to maybe a real short executive session here. I think we're kind of dancing on a little bit of an edge. Um so can we just save just a ten minute executive session and get a little bit more of the weeds of this, just to make sure everybody's clear?
Do all, you have three commissioners?
Um, yeah, Pat, Mark, Jody.
Now, are we going to?
Oh, yeah, now's great with you, I don't know. Case you tell.
I just.
Yeah, I mean, that's fine. Um, he only had a ten minute, yeah, he had ten minute update, didn't he?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, we'll go and then we'll do that.
It's fine.
Okay, thank you.
Still on your seat now, huh?
No, that's good. So I have two POs. Uh, one is, they're both from Swabie. Uh, fracture critical inspections, eighteen thousand three hundred and seventy five dollars. That is for fifteen bridges at twelve hundred and twenty five dollars a piece. So these are the ones that if one piece fails, a whole bridge could fail, one part. So uh, that's why they're so expensive.
Okay.
So is this the total amount that we have in the county of fracture critical, or is this just? That's our fifteen that we're inspecting.
This year.
Yes.
Okay, so this amounts for fifteen?
Yes.
Okay.
The fracture critical, they're every year.
Yes. So. Some of them, they've kind of changed some of those that they can go out to twenty four months now, but uh those are the usually yearly's.
My question is, how many total do we have in the county? I know we do, we do a portion every year. Is that how we?
So the fracture criticals like Pat said are usually every year.
Okay.
And some of them, they've moved kind of like twenty four months. Now here, in the, in the other PO I have is for the other hundred and fifty bridges that we have for a hundred and fifteen dollars a piece. But these are on schedule. They have to be inspected, and if there's a big problem, then we.
Okay, it just, it seemed like that number has.
Okay, it just, it seemed like that number hasn't went down. I mean, I'm surprised.
Got rid of some of the bridges.
Yeah, but I, that's what I was, to me, it didn't seem like it was.
And there may.
Maybe as I thought that we currently.
There could be some again next year, you know, these again next year or.
Sure.
As they change, so that's the first one.
Okay, I have a purchase order in the amount of eighteen thousand three hundred and seventy-five dollars for fracture. Critical inspections on fifteen bridges to Schwab Eaton. Do I have a motion to approve?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes. Three to zero.
Then I have another P O for Schwab Eaton, and this money is coming out of special bridge. Both of them. Uh, for a hundred and fifteen dollars each on a hundred and fifty bridges for a total of. Seventeen thousand two hundred and fifteen, fifty dollars, and this is biannual.
Biannual.
So, yes.
Um, I have a purchase order in the amount of seventeen thousand two hundred and fifty dollars as presented from a road and bridge superintendent to Schwab Eaton. For routine bridge inspections. Do I have a motion to?
So move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes three to zero.
Now, is this all of these bridges or is we have an?
Those are every, those are every two years. We just did, and I've got to bring them. I've got some. Uh, the under twenties, we just did ninety or ran out of a hundred of those. Uh. And I've got bridge inspection booklets for for each one of you.
I mean, you already gave me mine.
Yeah, but I gotta get you too. Sorry about that. Uh, update on Ottawa Road, they've got a poor little concrete around the uh. In sections. For the tube and then the road will be open here pretty quick and then in April, mid-April, they'll come in and. Uh, asphalt it, so they'll put A B three in on top of that. It looked pretty good when I was down there last week. So hopefully that'll be here before long. So I'll be eating is working with. Uh. Comanche on when we can get started on the bridge. On Independence Creek in. On that one, uh, there is something I want to. Explain that I'm gonna try to do. I'm gonna try to get some uh estimates on drainage for River Road, the gravel part. Uh, it's something where they're gonna have to come in with their uh equipment and set it to grade. Because there's not very much fall and we've got to do something to get the drainage so we can save our road, get our road built back up. To where it's not a problem, because ever since the flood, it's just getting worse and worse and worse. So that'll be happening here before long. I've talked to all three of them. We just have it. One of them's been out there and the other two contractors that I've talked to will be. Meeting with them in a week or so, hopefully this week. We are right now training on ditching. Uh, I've got a couple videos I will send to you guys. It was sent to me, caterpillars out there, training our guys on the proper way to ditch on two hundred and seventy-fourth road. So if any, any taxpayers see us uh mowing. Uh, we're either gonna be mowing brush, but there's gonna be some brush mode. And then where we're gonna be ditching, we're gonna try to get the grasses. As short as possible, so it doesn't cause us quite as much grief. And uh, as far as the township meeting, we should be getting ready to send that information out before the end of the week. Any questions about anything?
No.
All right.
I had the question about mowing some.
Yeah, no, so, but it it is, and we will, we will be mowing some brush also, so if they see us out there. Mowing brush, as long as it's dry and the weather's good, we'll try to get some of it knocked down. All right, thank you.
That would be attorney client. Attorney client.
I don't know.
Pat. Or personnel. Either. No, it would be, it would definitely be. I'll move the board accounting commissioners, reassess an executive session. Two ten P M for consultation with an attorney for the public body, which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship is allowed by K S A seventy-five dash. Four, three, one, nine, B two, that the purpose of the closed session is to protect the confidentiality of the discussion. And the, and that the board come out of executive session in ten minutes in the commission room of the courthouse basement, and those present will be. Uh, three commissioners, uh, county counselor, finance, and H R.
Second.
Hey, it's been moved in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, passes three to zero.
Uh, executive session.
Start, start out.
For five more minutes, uh, the same parameters as the last.
Okay, the motion's been made to extend our previous executive session.
Second.
Second, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, passes three to zero.
Uh. There's a non-elected personnel as allowed by K S A seventy-five dash four, three, one, nine, B one. And that the purpose of the closed session is to protect the privacy rights of the employee. And that the board come out of executive session in twenty minutes in the commission room. Uh, basement of the courthouse and those present will be uh three commissioners, uh senior village. Uh, H R, county counselor, and finance.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Passes three to zero.
It's a full investigation. It's not just like.
Okay, we are back in open session. Um. And we finished with that.
Right.
Thank you. Uh, unfinished business, county counselor updates.
Um, tax sale is, uh, a week from today, we have twenty-four properties left. Um, had several, several redemptions last week.
May I ask you a question on that?
Sure.
When those are redeemed, do they fall off our list on our website?
Well, not automatically, but I uh, I email our group. And uh, Jack removes them from the map.
Okay.
I removed them from the. The, the property list and then we post the new list.
Okay, perfect. So for people who have been watching a property, if it's no longer on that link. They could feel fine that it's been taken care of.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
But probably it would be the reverse, that there maybe could be something lingered that hasn't been updated yet, it would still be on there. Yeah, uh, there hasn't been one came out since February twelfth is the last. You know, the redemptions that came in, and I don't know if that's because they weren't processed upstairs, but. Um, or if that just. This was the day that people came in and redeemed was on Monday. Uh, and am I right? It seems like a lot of times that there's maybe a property or two that's do, uh, done the very last moment. Um, the. Up until the day before the sale. Yeah. When they redeem. Just so the public knows that they've got that much time to redeem those properties. And that they may get there expecting to see one and it was just removed the day before. So. So we are definitely trying to get them the same day that we get the notifications. To get them removed the same day.
The sale of our old job trailer. Um, so Stacy had um. A constituent o- um, offer to purchase the office trailer. Um, and she was planning to demolish it because it was full of black mold and rodent droppings. Um, but we talked about doing a sealed bid since there's someone interested. Um, will you be handling that sealed bid for her or is she to handle that?
No, I I I wanted to talk to her, I emailed with her about it. Um, maybe texting, we, I need some pictures of the. Of the trailer and we want to make sure that we disclose any. Problems with it so that we don't have somebody purchase it and then discover that it has mold and not want to go through with it. Um, so, yeah, I'll I'll get that prepared. She, she indicated she'd get the pictures when we.
Okay.
Yesterday was a. A holiday, I think they were closed too.
Yep.
So I have a check today.
Okay.
She sent those.
Perfect. Um, and then. Executive session. Um, we will need attorney-client executive session.
Still here for?
Yeah.
Oh, he's for that, okay.
County counselor.
Hello.
Um, Patrick, what do you think? Twenty minutes?
Thirty, yeah, yeah. Twenty, twenty, thirty.
And finance director.
Commissioners, finance, uh. County counselor and. Northern Bridge. I'll move the county, board of county commissioners, recess and executive session at. Two fifty-three. P M for consultation with an attorney for the public body, which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship. As allowed by K S A seventy-five dash four, three, one, nine, B two. And that the purpose of the closed session is to protect the confidentiality of the discussion. And that the board come out of executive session in thirty minutes in the commission room, courthouse basement, and those present will be. Three commissioners, finance director, uh. Can't bring my. County counselor and Northern Bridge.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, passes three to zero. Okay, we are back in open session. I'd look for a motion to approve our expenses today, this week.
So move.
All second, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, passes two to zero. Alan, you'll get to see those when you get back.
I can't wait.
Uh, public comment. Okay, seeing none, but for a motion to adjourn.
Wait a minute.
Oh, sorry. Yes.
I can come by tomorrow, uh, Kaylee, if you want to have us handy in the clerk's office.
Oh, the bills?
Yeah.
Yeah, they're in the clerk's office.
I can take a look at them and sign off on those. Um, and then can I just get a one-minute summary of this morning? How'd that go with C D B G and that presentation?
Sure, I mean, it was really good. The first half was really good. Um, I have my notes. The, uh, basically we need to prioritize ourselves of which. Cause there were several elements within the options.
Of the competitive grant.
Of the competitive grants. Actually, why don't you summarize? Because you'll be the one writing, like, doing it, doing it.
There's different uh categories of these competitive C D B G programs. So it could be the water, um, it could be infrastructure or in different things. And we have some literature we can show you when you get back, but.
That's great.
So like Casey said, the first half was trying to figure out which one you wanted to apply for and the thresholds and. Getting your ducks in a row and all that stuff. Um, and then there was another rollover. Or roll, is it called roller?
Roll, the rolling.
Yeah, a rolling grant. Um, so like she was saying, we need to prioritize to figure out which one we could go after. Since we are only able to apply one time for the competitive in addition to one time for the rolling one. Um, so that could be two. Um, and one of the ladies there had said we could apply on behalf of another entity, which would give us two for a competitive grant. Um, and then they have those year after year.
Right, okay.
They would have another, another grant next year and then twenty-six and twenty-seven if the funding is there. And then the second half after our break, um. Seemed, it was more like rural housing and um. Destruction of like tearing out property to clean it up or or putting something back in there that was beneficial. It was a, it was a lot of knowledge.
More economic development and and retaining jobs or.
Right.
Or gaining jobs that the, they were based on how many. Jobs you could retain is basically the loan you can get.
The loan, yeah.
I'll look forward to hearing more when I get back. Thank you.
Okay, anybody have anything else? Okay, I look for a motion to adjourn.
So move.
A second. It's been moved to seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, passes three to zero. We are adjourned. Have fun, Alan.